So the meeting is called to order. The next thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda for the meeting. I would like to make one change to this agenda. Under committee reports, I would like to add a second committee and that would be the nominee committee. Because they've finished their work and are ready to report out. So if there's no objections, I need a motion to approve that change and then to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with that addition.
Seconded.
Pollin favorite?
Hi.
Great. Public discussion. We were anticipating some, but it's not here. Okay, next on the agenda is the strategic planning update. Assuming else, we're just gonna leave that?
Yeah, so this is the second of the sort of interim updates. So we decided to try. Last year, we talked about keeping the community plans more front of mind. Like last time for the quarter update. I just highlighted three, three things that I felt like sort of stood out as things that might be good for folks to know about before the final report. They're both, none of them could be surprising. I don't think, I think we've mentioned all of them in summer port along the way, but thought it'd be a good time to just package them with the plan. And so we'll be showing up, answering any questions, happy to talk about it.
When this, when does this wrap up?
We have one more year.
One more year, so like June of 2023.
Yes.
So when does it start? You probably are already thinking about the next one.
We have some resources allocated to do something very, very preliminary this fiscal year. So we're going to look at possibly doing a very small scale community survey with a couple of questions or things to sort of get some handle on, on what we're going to talk about. Then at the start of the next fiscal year, we'll work on identifying consultants. Assuming the board is with that process. We did, we do have some money in the operational budget next year to work with consultants. And we, we could also work this, this fiscal year on putting together like RFPs. Be ready to kick that off right when the fiscal year changes. I think that we'll want to give ourselves ample time. We had sort of a bridge plan this last time to get us up and out of COVID, which I think worked well and I'm happy with how it serviced us. But I think we're probably ready for a little bit more traditional plan with a kind of like the idea of a local consultant who can come in and out as we might need them or want them to do check-ins with us as we move through.
How would you do the community survey? Would that be like something on the website?
I think we'd work with a firm to see, honestly, I think we'd start with what can we afford to do with the resources that we put aside? And then decide, does that, does that answer the, will that help us with the story that we're trying to hear? And if not, then we may, we might do it more in-house and do a website based or a walk in the door town here or something like that. But I think what would be kind of interesting would be to work out just a couple of preliminary questions and be able to include those in the RFP. It's going to say, we have this information as an example of how you, how you do your work. You'll talk to us about how you might use this in planning. We know that there are some big issues that staff would like to know more about community response to. And I, I would say examples of that are operational hours and looking at outreach, whether we're reaching, who we want to reach, where we want to reach them. And how we sort of use our overall staff resources to meet those needs outside of library. But we haven't, haven't done any concrete work to put that out there.
No else? All right. Next is the policy review, the collection development policy. I just said, Anne wrote this up, right?
I was gonna say, this was normally scheduled to be in November. I think I will bring it up again. We just wanted to put this. We've been working really hard on training the staff for intentional issues. Kind of came up right in the middle while we were planning for that training mission. March, it just happened, just at the end of February. It came to light that Hoopla in there having just this vast one over one mill titles that they had been just working with publishers and grabbing whatever was available. They don't really have a collection plan. Some items got on there that were all across the panel where fashion was popping up. They were removed within a few days of being identified by a couple of groups. So during the whole process, we didn't really have any control of whether or not those things were on. But inflation and even if they weren't there when we bought, when we added, but they could be added anytime. Two, they were removed really quickly without any oversight from any input from public libraries. And so it could, the idea is just to put something in the collection plan. It says, we might have these collections, but we don't really have any control on them or what's to go.
And you don't necessarily know when something's been added to.
Right, right. And it's a million titles and it's not, you can, if you know what you're looking for on there, you can remove specific things. But you'd have to know exactly what you're looking for. And then you have to tell them why you removed it.
Oh, because that was my question, because I, I read this, this news plus article. And it did say, we give librarians the tools to remove any titles that they want. I didn't know you could do that.
Discover, yeah. But you'd have to know exactly what you were looking for. And to know what you were exactly looking for, you'd have to certain, you'd have to search for them.
And so, but if a patron came to you and said, this is a horrible racist thing that's on there. And they told you the title, you could be ready.
You could be ready for it, but.
But in our policy, we probably wouldn't.
Right, that's true.
Yeah.
But we may never.
But in our policy, we wouldn't have chosen that.
Yeah, because it wouldn't have met the criteria for purchase. Yeah, it's a.
It's incredible.
Every single part of the way, I was, I was not happy.
So the American Library Association has drafted resolutions to put political pressure on these groups that they have customer library committees. So that somebody that has some experience with collection development and the process and the luxury side, which we make those decisions involved in some way. We don't know whether that will move to overdrive.
The difference with overdrive is we do choose splits on our overdrive site, but it can't be. It's just a big aggregator software.
And you can, if you ever, yeah, just like a regular search, like I'm doing a story time tomorrow and I wanted a digital book. And I just typed in spring in overdrive. Well, holiday fantastic books. In Hoopla, there are so good ones, but then is it just kind of trickles down your like?
Titles. You would imagine.
Overdrive is one of those places where we purchase the title and then we have to repurchase it. Okay.
And there was a board recommendation or suggestion that we add a sentence to the way that I C P L was engaged with the aggregator. Tom suggested something like, I C P L engages in appropriate ways with aggregators to encourage transparency in aggregated collections policies. And I think Anne and I agree that that could be very similar to incorporated. We, we feel like we're open to it if that's what the board would like.
You know, I would say it's coming back in November. Yeah, I would, I don't think it's an emergency by any means.
Go forward with like F S O or ProQuest or any kind of database.
Same one I was saying.
Yeah, and after that, they had, there has been some controversies, but they're moving that.
Does it, it comes up in the catalog? And does it recommend things?
Well, with our, with our personal catalog, we don't have all of the catalog records for Hoopla. We have the 5,000 most popular titles. So those are probably not going to show up in our catalog, but we would. And the reason for that is there's no way for us to download a million and go get a record. So we've chosen to do the route in which that they help us maintain catalog records on a monthly basis. Exactly right up to date.
Can you put, but we made it how much stuff?
Well, we should buy more so they grab the memory case and share it. They don't, they don't give you notifications of what they take off.
Okay. Looks like then that the only change that's being recommended at this off time, off review time is to add the statement about the aggregated collections. So I need a motion, unless anybody else has more comments. Motion to approve the changes to the collection development policy. Correct my change file, did I screw something up? I don't even know what I did.
Sharing your screen.
And sharing emojis.
All right, yeah, it's still recording.
Again, moved all second.
Pollin favorite?
Hi.
Moving on to the third quarter statistics, financials. I've always amazed at how my statistics week. But you have any comments or questions?
But not surprising. I said, it's a weird one, but not surprising. With, with regards to heating costs and consultancy services, for example.
Trouble spending money.
That's my concern with this year. If anything, we're, we're going to end up a little under as a, as a department of the city. I don't, I have no guilt really over that. I mean, if there is a year two to balance a little high, this is not a bad one. Looking at, looking at our, all the departments across the board. Of course, we also want to use those resources for what we're allocated for. We're going to do some scrambling here the last quarter to try to figure out what can be, what, what things that there's been supply issues can be expedited. I wouldn't be surprised if a few vendors have had enough cancellations that they might come back and say, okay, so we said no to those shelves, but now have them on the floor ready to go. Like, would you take gray instead of black? And we still have the opportunity, the carryover call from the city has not come yet. So that's an opportunity to say, yeah, we budgeted through this, it was approved. And, and here's the evidence that we just couldn't get it based on supply issue. I think this is going to be a heavy year for that across the whole city. So it will, we'll spend some time on that, thinking about what expenses fall into that category. Some of the items that we're having a supply chain issue with were budgeted through Nobu, which was a much different situation. That is much more at the board's discretion of whether, whether we do sort of unofficial roll over with that or if we want to actually write it into the next budget with a larger number, knowing that we had unspent resources this year, which we have time to talk about. Again, I, it's not going to surprise me if we have some sort of last minute things go through or not. The most disappointing this year has been some vendors that we know and use regularly saying with confidence, like here's our cutoff date for this fiscal year, you're good to go, we're going to invoice. And once we actually send in the confirmation of order, getting a response back saying changed, that's not going to happen. And it's, you know, I don't, you can't blame anybody because it's all the way down the chain, but it is disappointing. We haven't run into anything like mission critical, like we haven't had, we haven't run out of R F I tags or library cards or things that would be difficult to source quickly and locally. But there are some projects that, that we're still sort of, we were just not sure if they're going to happen or not. But I will keep the board abreast of the carryover timeline as that happens. I, I'm expecting a time now, it's often not until a little bit farther into the quarter. But because I think there's going to be so many across the city, I wouldn't be surprised to say I have a little extra time. So finance has, has a little bit of leeway to work with that. But otherwise, there were, I think our, I, I felt pleased with, with where our numbers were falling.
So the reflecting on Angie's report, like the shirts and stuff, is that Nobu money for free for the reading program?
That could have been operational, right? Or do we use fillable for shirts?
Not any, we know that we use, doesn't mean it gives that we use sort of our operational budget for it. And in past years, we use.
So it might be if they're more expensive this year, it won't be a big problem.
No, and there have been other things, t-shirts are actually a really great example. Those, the price of those are of the flows anyway. And sometimes we budgeted what we thought was enough, but we then have to borrow from another printing line or even without COVID stuff. Another, what's something else? Another good example is the cost of the window. That went up 40%.
And it's not necessarily the paper, it's the ink, the ink on the paper is what it's like. We did not, because it comes, the summer month comes from Sam's budget and my budget.
Our being as quite a large printing project and.
Yeah.
But luckily, because of some other, other lines being still available, we were able to cover it with sort of a, I mean, easiest internal solution.
Why is ink so expensive? Is it Russian oil?
I'm not sure. I, we, we were quite shocked when that came back. And we were scrambling, looking back at, you know, what the winter window costs, what this costs.
And I mean, I, I think that especially our local vendors, I really trust that they're not, this is true inflation. It's not, nobody's trying to, to, you know, make a quick dollar off of it. It's just, it makes it harder to make the decisions and then we're on a tighter timeline. So it all just sort of compounds as an issue. But the other reality is we don't, we could be facing another budget next year just like this. I mean, we, we had tried to account for the inflation issues that we knew about many months ago. We were creating the operational budget request. So we'll just have to, like this year, sort of walk through the year evaluating as we go. If we spend double the amount we planned on this publication, then what do we give up? And in some cases, it works out organically because events are canceled or things prices change in the other direction. But it's, I, I will say that having Nobu as a resource could always something we're so thankful for. This kind of budget year, you realize just how, how much flexibility that gives you. I mean, even if it's, even if it's just accessing $1,500 for something that otherwise you couldn't find in your operational. It really makes a difference, so.
Also, there's an offhand mention of the automatic material handler, which I completely lost track of. Is this something we are doing, still considering?
I think that's what we're still considering. That is, there's enough delay in that process that vendors are reluctant to come and do, do their, their show for us. So I, I think what we're going to do is ask the city to allow us to roll that C I P. And once we can get more activity from vendors, we'll make more of it. I, if the city says no for whatever reason, whether their C I P budget is too tight next year or there are other reasons, it will not make things worse for us. But I'm hoping that they'll let us kind of roll it one or two more fiscal years so that we can hopefully let that supply catch up and hear more from the vendors. Sam did see a, a unit or two at P L A that seemed like something we want to explore, but probably would not be available in time to fulfill the original timeline. Again, we're not the only harbor this condition. And when you're talking about something with so many different vendor parts leading into the product.
Try not to take it personally, but I just had somebody finally call me back from P L A and gave me ideas for when we could talk in June. And I'm like, all right, it sounds like your business.
And I, I think that we will share more information with the board before that purchase was made, certainly. And typically in the past, what, what I like to do with that kind of thing is if we have vendors coming in, make those presentations available if more vendors want to hear about it. It's an odd, I mean, unless you've really seen it in action or have a history of libraries, it's kind of a hard thing. What, how big are they, where are they, how wild are they? What's, how does it impact other jobs? So those are things that we could walk through.
Done some reorganizing that, you know, may impact the decision to purchase or not.
Yes. Yeah, and there are multiple sort of big categories. There's sort of a smart sorter versus a full automatic materials handler. And, and those aren't in the same umbrella, but kind of do two different jobs. I think as, as the jobs in that department have sort of been tightened up, we know more about what we do.
I'm solving that. Exterminator back there.
Just call her the exterminator.
Other questions regarding expenditures or the other statistics? This doesn't require approval, right? All right, well, this was supposed to be a long meeting.
Yeah, right.
Moving on to the reports, director's report.
I do have a couple of things that came up after I wrote this. Jen has hired a new assistant in the admin, a new aide. Do you want to just talk a little about Jen's background?
Yeah, Jen is a student at University of Ireland. She's going to be graduating in two, from the English program in something creative learning. Recently, he worked at the University of Biohospital. Part of this, he's been great job.
She's been a really good fish.
Just a full-time position or?
Just an FYI, the building is scheduled to be washed tomorrow, the exterior. Brad had that scheduled for a couple of months earlier, but between weather and other events, we've postponed it. That should take care of any of the sort of graffiti residue on the building. But more importantly, to me, it takes care of that sort of gradient black gunk that comes down onto the limestone. So it should sort of freshen up the facade for someone. It's just our materials age or something wrong, but I always like it when those, when those things are done. Just a mention of the board vacancy process. So that obviously is out, that it's open. I asked Stephanie Bowers if she would share the city's diversity posting list, which she did. I have sent out to a number of people on the list that I knew well enough to sort of say, like, here's this, can you get it on the, on your posting? And then Jen and I are going to continue to work with some of the folks who are new to us to give a little more context. That position, that vacancy closes on the 10th. It will be in the May, at the May 17th council meeting, it's scheduled to be appointed. Which, and that packet comes out on the 12th. So the closing on the 10th, it should be, become available to all of us to see on the 12th. And then that being on the 17th. In the past, when there's candidates that I felt like were of specific value because they filled something that might not be visible to outside folks. I've sort of reached out to a particular council member and said, this is something we noticed about the applicants. You know, thanks so much for your, your attention, just to, you know, not expecting anything to be swayed by, by that, but just to share what we, if there's a detail that would be especially pertinent to what we're missing currently.
So theoretically, then the person would be available for the June meeting?
Yep, the bylaws specify they have to be. So they have to be oriented according to the bylaws before the first meeting. But I don't know that.
The meeting's the 26th.
Maybe the 26th. If they have availability, that's, you know, it's, it's a week and a half before. I would say certainly, I would expect to have a time in one rotation. But we can be pretty flexible with when that happens.
Well, if it's just you and me and a candidate, then I, I'm flexible a second half of the month.
So I, I don't think it's, I think it's reasonable to expect that they'd be here in May. And then, I mean, 17. I do, I did have a question about the June meeting. I'm pretty sure that it falls over A L A dates, is that the 23rd is?
The weekend of 24th?
So the 23rd, maybe a travel day for some of us who are going to that. If that's the case, I don't know historically if the board has moved the meeting or just had a, not all quarters will go. So there would be a coordinator here who could take my place. And we could talk about it offline, Carol, if you'd rather.
Well, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with moving the meeting, but I don't want to make that decision on behalf of the entire board. I don't know if you all want to.
Personally, once I get into June, my schedule is pretty wide open, so.
It could be a week later, which is, I assume it'll be June 30th. Actually.
Leading into the 4th of July weekend?
Said I was going to be gone, so I, I actually won't be here on June 23 either.
I'm not, honestly, I'm waiting a little bit to hear if there's any updates on the, the under five vaccine before I decide for sure whether or not I'm going to go.
Please, Anne.
If it's, if it's still sort of, we don't know when it's going to happen, but we're hoping soon I'll probably go. If there's a definitive date and it's on the horizon, I will probably stay.
Can we put this on the May agenda?
Those are the only things that come up since I.
So I guess next up is children's. Summer reading should be a lot more fun.
Well, summer reading should be a lot more fun this year. I think, oh, I'm already higher for more certain, or what it is.
That's a lot of work, isn't it?
So I keep looking, I found I have to take down the list of the week, so after two years, it's not doing that much progress. I keep looking at all the programs that we have coming up. It's gonna be, it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be packed, it's, we kind of started to get our preview. Our children's circulation is still way up. Program members are.
I have a friend who runs a restaurant that she during the pandemic, she cut her menu way back and made it real basic and everything. She knows she needs it of it now, but she's, she doesn't want to. I think the pandemic is just, it's sort of like, oh, really, I have to do that again?
Six and just kind of did the, and now it's like. It's coming. We're excited.
Okay. Let's see, next is Anne.
It was a six or it's also free.
So well, it's the circulation or whatever you call it. Just about what you expected.
Well, I I mean, I'm pleased, I'm I'm pleased with the reach that it's getting, it is getting more use or more people are using it. But I am watching the costs. We spent a lot. Well, I, I mean, there's a lot, that's a lot of money for circulation and it's a different mind frame. Like, we have a DVD and it, we buy it for $15, it goes out 200 times in its pennies, right? And now we get this multiple dollar amount sometimes. It's a little, it's just a different, I mean, it impacts the budget. In some cases, it's cheaper than how much the cost per circuit is for an overdrive audio book when we buy it outright for like that two year. When it's eight to a hundred and twenty dollars, an audio book, we're only spending a dollar ninety nine.
We spend more for more popular things.
Yeah. I, you know, I haven't figured out a rhyme or reason to what they what they charge. So it can range from seventy nine cents a circuit to ninety nine. Audio books tend to be a little bit more expensive, but TV shows are a little cheaper. That's a little bit of what I've kind of figured out. But, you know, the pricing is also not upfront. And you have to look by title. You have to know what you're looking for.
And with Hoopla. Does just selecting the item count as a use or desert grace period of seconds or something? Doesn't Canopy have a fifteen second or something to save important?
So with Canopy, you press play and then 10 seconds and the charge is a library. With Hoopla, you have to check it out, kind of like overdrive, you're checking it out and then download it. Once you do that checkout and you've never opened it, never listened to it, you're still charged.
What people I wanted it, right?
How many people, how how common is it for people to do it?
Yeah, it's not that many. It's less than five percent. It's something we've heard quite a bit. Canopy too, if we decide to up it, how many people are we impacting if we drop it back?
Next is IT report. Um, this is probably a dumb question, but I don't know the answer, so I'll ask it. What is an A W E computer? It was removed.
Oh, moved for, oh, they're moved. I was like, okay, like, what'd you write? They are all in one learning station. So they are for the under five crowd. They're preloaded with games that are educational and fun. They don't go out to the internet.
Oh, thank you.
And in the past, our biggest, they used to be like right there with our public internet computers. And, but every once in a while, we would have parents who are like concerned that their little kids are playing Sesame Street. And child next to them was playing Minecraft or block blocks, which are internet games and can have a little bit, you know, more developmental. Appropriate things for a ten year old than for a three year old. So this way, we, you're in a pandemic and right before we reopen, he moved our new book collection. And then we put these A W Es where the new books used to be. So there's like a wall dividing. They're on one side of the wall, the young kid appears and the. And then it gave us space to add two more public computers for the kids. Because in the summer, it's a lot like, we needed, we needed, I mean, pre pandemic numbers to show us that we needed more public computers.
Great use of space. Yeah. What if my kids just ran off the opposite sides? Yes.
I know, we put a couch over there now and another little kind of toy thing, so parents can sit right there on the couch and watch. Before, there wasn't really a spot for parents to sit and watch their kids on those little little A W E computers. It's just a brand name, I guess. It's just like a doll.
All right, any other questions? Questions for Brett? Patty is not here today. I went and Tom was there. Robin was there. We went to the volunteer recognition event. It's very nice. It really, it was lovely. I was trying to figure out if board members over the course of their six year term would end up being one hundred year volunteers. I suspect that they, I'm not suggesting that 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 you rec, I'm not. Anyway.
Special trophy.
And you really have to attend to all the meetings though, so.
Probably have to, we have that.
Okay. Miscellaneous, I I don't believe I've ever had a miscellaneous address in a meeting, but the president's report, I. Really don't, again, don't really have anything other than acknowledging the volunteer event. I did also, Jen sent out, can't remember when, earlier this month. Continuing Ed opportunity through the state library called Next in the Boardroom, Facing Crucial Conversations. And that is on Thursday, May 26th, which I believe is our meeting day. It's from six to seven thirty. It's a webinar. If somebody really wanted, you know, it it sounds kind of interesting. Well, this comes from Amazon, so take, when stakes are high, opinions vary, emotions are unstrong, you have three choices. Avoid a crucial conversation, suffer the consequences, handle the conversation poorly and suffer the consequences. Or apply the lessons and strategies of crucial conversations and improve relationships and results. Written in an engaging and witty style, crucial conversations is a, I kind of like a book. And this webinar talks about that, teaches readers how to be persuasive rather than abrasive. My printer cuts part of it off, so. I don't know if that actually interests anyone or not, but if it did, I don't know if the people who wanted to. Sit there through it, wanted to, you know, do that at the end of the board meeting from six to seven thirty or just. Figure if people wanted to do it, they could go home and do it. You know, I don't, it would be, it would be continuing Ed. It says there's no requirement or expectation that attendees read the book prior to the program.
But also maybe they have eight, I think it's eight or nine copies of that.
Of the book?
So people are interested.
Maybe that would be, maybe that would be. A more individualized way of of addressing it. Have you read it?
We ordered it for the leadership team to read. We haven't, we haven't added to the agenda yet.
Afraid of what conversations might ensue.
Well, okay, I'm not hearing any. Yes, we definitely should do that, so. Just for future reference, that would be possible, right, Brett, to do the webinar here at the end of a board meeting?
Okay.
Would that require any of you to stay later then?
I mean, some of us.
I mean, we can turn things off. You don't have to do it. It's a little squishy.
We don't have to report it to anyone, so as many as we do.
I think it's just like, the question is, does your board do continuing education or something?
Yeah, standard number eight, all members of the library board participate in continuing education. Yeah, in-service day, I think it it does. Somewhere it does give a number, like eight hours or something. If you went to the in-service day and then you learn things from the coordinators who update us, I think you would need that.
Certainly not vain, not to interrupt, but if anybody's thinking about submitting a proposal for an I O A program, they're due at the end of the month. So there is a board track. I know that they don't always get as many programs about trustee stuff as they'd like. That's an extremely basic one form, if you like to put it, and it's landmark. So if you have a idea, but you're not sure if you could throw it in.
Is it in COV O with you?
So very commitment.
Okay, and is it, it's in October, right?
Usually either the first or second.
Okay, announcements from members. I really liked the way the packet was done this week with the link to the PDF.
Yes.
That was nice.
It's been noticed.
I really like how consistently I come and pick it up from your office.
The summer reading program this year is brilliant. I really love it. Yeah, just. I'm going to get it as a patch. Yeah. Oh, man. I'm going to be like, yeah, I'm going to be writing my kids get that T shirt.
What about ink on T shirts? Is that expensive? Oh, gosh.
Oh, no, T shirts are expensive, but they are. They are very beloved by the community. I mean, when I got here. I I did wonder about the expense of them. It seemed like a significant expense, but. When people have gone out of their way to tell me my children have them from, you know, their university now and they have them going back. We still hold on to them. We made a memory quilt with them. You know, kids will come in with like these ratty, too tight, summer reading T shirts. I have, I have. Embraced them fully. And I like that we, you know, we start, we we look at local vendors, we we try to make it and.
And this year is our chest.
This year's theme is good. Sometimes it's, I think this is going to be a fun one, but people really, they do resonate with a lot of them.
Well, people do like free stuff. Okay, committee reports, has the foundation met?
Yes, we met last week. Angie joined us to talk about the summer reading program. They shared information about a new free optional supplemental health insurance coverage for volunteers available through the city. Everyone was encouraged to support the E dot to read next week at Oasis. Which was in Patty's report as well. We approved nominations for two new directors at large and two returning members. And they'll be considered again next week, next month. At the corporate members meeting, is that next month? I thought that was in June.
Uh, no, actually, it might be in.
Patty says it's in my salt.
President appoints to foundation board, but the corporate. Well, let's see, it does say that. It's on the 26th, so, all right, there we next month. Okay, and then the other committee report that we added at the beginning of the meeting is the officer nominating.
So we met virtually as a committee and looked at, Tom very helpfully pulled up. The past sort of terms of service, how long our current board member or officers have served. We discussed and and it seemed wholly reasonable to ask our current officers to continue in their roles. We reached out individually and they were all amenable. So our nominations are to continue our. We, is this an action item? We nominate our.
I guess so.
It is, I don't know when we elect. It could be now.
I think, I think they've done it now, yeah, or whenever they're announced. Tom just doesn't want to be chairing them.
Okay, I don't even know if it requires board approval. I guess I'll hold it, but. A motion, so, okay, the motion is that Derek will remain. As secretary, I will remain as vice president, I will remain as president. So I need a motion to approve that slate of officers for the next fiscal year. And I need a second.
Hold on a second.
Really finding his role here. Okay, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Indications, there's some articles in the packet. And then the next item that does require board approval is the approving of the consent agenda. Minutes from our last meeting in March and the dispense.
I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
All in favor? And then the agenda for the May meeting. Will add the decision about what to, what date to set for the June meeting to that agenda. Bylaws committee, any use?
I don't think it was a year.
No. I I was just, I mean, I, I don't mind that we have a bylaws committee. I was, I just had never, I don't remember it being a part of the. Sure, is it, is it like a, like a every three years thing? Okay.
What's that we have on since I've been on the board?
So this is a three year.
So, okay, so it's just like a, like a policy review, okay. All right, well, if somebody is really wanting to be on that bylaws committee, do let me know, please. Otherwise, I'll just fix someone.
Well, in the past three years, a lot of things have come up that you might want to think about, like, you want to try to put workover stipulation and other things like that. work participation and other things like that. So it could be, could be an unusually sometime to be on.
You mean, just think about restricting it, right?
And lots of committees will be moving it to the end of the agenda or
For the public comment?
Or moving it to, yeah, or moving it somewhere else. I think that some I think that that's supposed to accomplish like film industries where they just come in and try to take over the whole meeting, but there are pros and cons, obviously.
Sure. Have there ever, I mean, has, has the library ever experienced issues with public comment or?
You can't close, it sounds like the.
I mean, we, we had someone who used all the time. It was allotted to him, but he finished when he was. But that's something bylaws doesn't speak to, whether there's a time limit or not, just sort of ad hoc, maybe or not.
So, so infrequently, we have non-staff public comment, I think it's with benefits and not having scripted.
It's, it's a good thing to think about though, because you'd hate to make a change reactively.
Right, I never like to get.
Does city council have the public participation before, at the front of the meeting or the end of the meeting, say when not?
Just changed, I think there's something about it.
I can look it up.
Well, it would be something for the bylaws committee to work on, they could contact city council. Okay, so think about it. It might be actually not that bad of a committee to be on.
What you're trying to say is it's super important.
Yeah, that's very valuable.
Well, it, it's an essential part of how we operate. It can be, because like you say, a couple, couple things have, have come up. So when does it, I don't know, when does it report out then? Because that would be a good thing to know before you're on the committee.
July.
Is it July? Oh, okay, there you go, all right, okay. Case, I will return the meeting.